If you would join in, us and Mike Quick. We do a twice will, what asks you to remain standing, Mr. McCoy's immigration, I'm saying part.
The United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you please bow your heads. Most holy and heavenly Father, we come before you this day, asking for your blessings. Your blessing upons our community, our county, all of the folks that are here today to work. We work for the betterment of the citizens of Bourbon County. Please guide these individuals that are here today to make good decisions, but more importantly, bless all those who are out working each and every day for us, for our benefits, especially our Sheriff's Department, our Police Department, our emergency personnel. They're there to work day and night hard for us. Oh Lord Jesus, we ask all this in your name. Amen.
Thank you. Good. I haven't heard, I don't know if you can, we might, we may manage.
I gotta sign.
Okay. It looks like ours. I was watching it, I'll pass it right over here. Good. We're at the consent agenda. You want to sign or you want me to move along? Okay. Okay. Approval of consent agenda, has approval of minutes, approval of accounts payable with the amount 41707946, approval of miscellaneous dispersments, 43299395 with the dates. And Jennifer, I do like that format, thank you. So, we can just vote on a consented agenda approval by her motion.
Yeah, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda, which has the approval of minutes, approval of accounts payable, and approval of miscellaneous dispersments.
I second that.
Yep.
Any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Eric Bailey. Morning.
Morning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much so.
Already lost without Jennifer. All right, first off, handout, January's fuel reports. Thank you. Let you know where we're at. Fuel wise. And the second one is our new Culver applicants for the month of, I guess I should sign it for the, for the month of January.
As you see, the sidewalk, got that poured yesterday, got half the curb done, gonna get everything drilled, rebar put in, we'll get the half of the parking poured hopefully this week, and then maybe next week, we can get it finished up and get out of there.
Looks really good, thank you.
Chad and his guys are doing a really good job.
Yeah.
So, reminder, M Shaw, training tomorrow for all the guys, we will be at the Shirley Jaeger Building, so when you see all of our county vehicles there, you know what's taking place. And then we have new minor training next Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday for the new hires that need their new minor training, so, just giving you a heads up on that. Rock crusher, we had a piece break on the drum, looks like it's gonna be under warranty. The piece has already been shipped, or in the process of being shipped, hope to have it here by the end of the week. It's about 7,000 pounds, so, big. It's gonna take semi or a large truck to bring it to us, so anyhow, just giving you a heads up on that.
I'm glad that's under warranty, and it might just be my little experience, but I've never seen one break before.
They haven't either, so.
Never seen a drum break.
Yeah.
Anyway, that's under warranty.
Yeah, that's my understanding, so anyhow. Commissioner Bligh, the Bronson area there by the cemetery, we did go out and get that taken care of there.
Perfect, thank you.
Friday, I talked with John, that's how, yeah.
Stokes.
Yeah, so, got that done. Need you to look at your calendars here, and then, we don't have to do it today, but need to be thinking about it, we need to start thinking about a work session for our roads, so we can be putting some plans together. Would like to get started sooner rather than later this year, looks like oil prices, fuel prices are gonna be down to start off the year, but I'm hearing projections of them going up latter part of the year, so, like to get as much done as we can early, save as much as we can, so we can try and do a little more. So, be looking at your calendars, thinking about that, and maybe next week or something, we can talk dates and see what we have. Anything for me?
I would ask you, excuse me, and I'm sure I already doing it, spend time on really studying your motorator program.
Okay.
And I say that because we haven't bought ones in 2017.
Absolutely.
So, what concerns me is, I'm not saying we can afford to buy one today, but it's happened in the past, you wake up one morning, you got six wore out, and becomes a high-dollar item.
Absolutely.
They're probably at 350 now, maybe, I might be a little low.
They're right around, yeah.
So, what, we need to make sure we have an aggressive planning program on those motorators. We used to try to do one every other year, but that's, we never could do that money-wise, but again, in 2017, so I know you've got, be getting some with high hours.
We are getting some with high hours, and I will say, we worked with Susan at the end of last year, trying to get our 10-year plan and what have you on our equipment put together, so.
I appreciate that, I just like to avoid you coming here and say, I need five motorators today.
Yeah, no, no, so, but we do have a plan, we probably will be visiting with you later on in the year, just kind of see where budget and everything is, and go from there.
They're not gonna get any cheaper?
No, no they're not, and availabilities.
Yeah, actually, I've heard they're 11 months out.
Yeah, so anyhow.
Okay.
Anything else?
That's all I had.
Is that me? Okay, Culver permits, good enough.
I can tell you where it's gonna be.
Okay, all right.
Like where it needs to go.
Okay, perfect. All right.
Thank you, Eric.
You bet.
Mr. McQuig, septic variance, please.
Okay, we had a request for a variance on our sanitation code. Marco Estates was actually started in 1968, and was plotted at that time, so majority of the lots out there are not a full acre, so we need a variance of our one-acre requirement, so that we can develop those lots that are out there. I did put in here that, you know, that we're allowing the less than one acre, but all of the codes have to be followed, so that, make sure they maintain that part.
Are you allowed to give a location, or is there an address to that site?
Not for the, for that exact site, we just did it for Marco Estates, because there's gonna be more than, there's still some lots available out there that haven't been developed yet, so.
Yeah, the letter I saw, there was already 12 of them out there that fit under, like seven-eighths of an acre, so.
Right, yeah, and they were put in long before our codes went into effect in 97, so.
And everything out there seems to be working okay, the ones that say are the 12.
Yeah, we don't have any problems out there.
Yeah, okay, must be, so you need a motion for that variance.
Where's this at?
Marco Estates, it's out where Eric lives, out by where Eric.
Yeah, I'll put a house right on top of Eric out there, so. If I can see that, or flip them once we make the motion, or one of us need to make a motion, so. It's a nice lot, it should be.
Right, it's a, it's still ready to be developed, we still got places to be developed.
I will say, there's lots on 230th, so, that'd make Eric feel any better, down the road from him.
I make a motion to follow Mr. Quick's advice here, and accept this variance, variance of sanitation code two, 7.1.
Second.
Any discussion? On favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right. County clerk, please.
So, as I was cleaning off my desk, I found a few documents I just wanted to let you know about. The first is the water use report form from the Department of Agriculture. This is for Elm Creek Lake, it is addressed to the Bourbon County Board of Commissioners. Looks like they received it January 3rd, so I don't know if this has been brought before you yet.
No, it hasn't.
Okay. In the past, the chairman has always had to sign this, because they did a paper form. Now, they are going to charge $20 if you want to do a paper form. This can be filed online through Eric's department to avoid that fee, so, just wanted to bring this to you to see if you'd like to avoid the $20 fee and allow Eric to sign that.
And gentlemen, this is a form we've been filling out for years, it helps the state track the water level at Elm Creek, that we report different quarters, et cetera, so, not a new report, if we could save $20, we should probably.
That was, that was my thinking, but I just wanted to bring that before you. The second is a public notice that received from the Department of Health and Environment, and looks like they received that back January 17th. This is a public notice, so any type of water pollution control permits throughout the state, citizens have a right to send any type of questions, comments, concerns to the Department of Health and Environment. This is not a new permit for Bourbon County, it lists everybody in the state of Kansas. This is simply a renewal, they're not going to have any additional animals, so this is available in my office for anybody who would like to see this. The public notice ends February 18th.
Yeah, I did know that's a renewal, so it's nothing new.
Right.
No additional animals or anything, so.
Okay, and then, received a letter from the Pawnee Township. There was a trustee that had to step down due to health issues, and they would like the commission to appoint the replacement, so I gave you all that letter.
Okay, I think we talked about this, but I don't think we appointed anyone, but.
Do.
Did we?
No.
Yeah.
I don't, does anyone know?
I mean, we need.
This lady?
Oh, they recommended somebody?
Yeah, they recommended somebody, I don't personally know them, I don't believe.
I don't either, but I'm sure, coming from this person, it's a good report, so.
What's, I mean, how, how long do we have to fill the vacancy?
Unfortunately, I don't know how long by statute you have to fill the vacancy, I know that I have been contacted by that person, the vacancy that she had to give up, and just requested that that appointment be filled.
Well, I'm gonna go off the recommendation of the person that was doing it, and would make a motion to nominate Rachel Wagner to the Pawnee Township vacant position.
A second.
Any discussion? On favor? Aye.
Aye. I make a motion also to allow Eric to sign the Kansas Department of Agriculture 2022 water use report, so we can, don't have to file it online, or file it by paper, save $20 bucks.
Any discussion? On favor? Aye. Okay.
I have been trying to find out what boards you all serve on, unfortunately, there's not a folder that says boards or anything, so I've been going back through commission minutes to try to see when different commissioners were appointed to the board, so that list is what I have found so far. And there was a letter that I sent out that gave to, that Tri-Valley is requesting a, an appointment for the vacant position on their board.
How often do that board meet?
Which I don't know, I have, I've not been able to find any type of.
That's something you're interested in, Nelson?
Well, I don't know anything about it, I'd be interested in finding out how often they meet and what they do.
If you'd like, I can contact the various boards to try to gather more information for you.
And I'm on the mental health board, I've never received any literature, any notice of meetings, any minutes, or nothing, just, so I'm not really a member, I guess, so, which is okay, they meet in Iowa, but.
That's the thing, I just don't wanna, you know, be on a member of some board that I know nothing about, and I know what my, don't know what my obligations are, or anything like that, so.
You guys want to visit next week? Thinking about it?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Maybe, they're requesting one of us to be on the board, is that correct?
There is a, there is a vacancy, and they have actually asked that somebody that is not a commissioner be appointed to that vacancy.
Oh, well, they asked for that, someone who is not a commissioner to be appointed?
Yes, yes, so behind your board paperwork is the email from Tri-Valley. I have an extra copy there, if you see that.
So, we appoint three members to our board of directors, I, it's, I don't, I mean, I've slipped since we appointed the other two, apparently, so I would like to know who, what, what two we appointed, what other two we appointed, so we need more information.
Absolutely, okay, I will reach out to the different committees and get more information for you. Then, I would actually like to request to amend the agenda to talk about budgets.
Okay.
Okay.
I'd make a motion to amend the agenda to talk about budgets.
Yes.
To discuss budgets with the county clerk.
Okay.
A second.
Any discussion? On favor? Aye.
Okay, so I have been sorting through the 3,000 emails that are in my inbox, and I have received emails from the Department of Administration, that many of the budgets that were due to them by December 1st of last year are either, were not submitted, are incomplete, or incorrect. My predecessor had sent some, I received a letter yesterday, or an email yesterday, stating that there are still 27 incomplete budgets that were sent to the Department of So, I just wanted you to be aware that this is the situation, I'm going to reach out to the Department of Administration. I received my appointment ship yesterday, everything is signed, it's official, I can now legally act as county clerk, and I will work with them to get this corrected.
Do you know if there's any fines, penalties yet, or do you know?
Unfortunately, I do not.
27 budgets, a lot of budgets.
That is a lot of budgets, yes.
After probably taking the cemetery boards, et cetera.
Yes, different cemetery boards, watersheds, fire districts, townships, cities.
When they're due December 31st?
They're actually due to the state by December 1st.
December 1st?
They're due to the clerk by October 1st. Yes. Yes, because of R and R, they are, I have a county clerk's checklist that states that they are due to municipal services electronically by December 1st.
Wow, okay, we appreciate you catching that, and we appreciate you working on to correct it, so.
Unfortunately, I haven't been able to find a folder for all of this, I am still sorting through some stacks in my office, but I wanted you to be aware and know that I will work with them, so you get this corrected.
Thank you very much, Jennifer.
Appreciate it.
So that is all I have.
Thomas Gluck?
I mean, we just have lots of stuff that apparently wasn't done by a department.
Well, it's been a long time since December 1st, I'm not gonna pick on anybody here, anything like that, but I hope the public takes notice what Jennifer just said, she's doing, gonna do a great job, she's gonna get that clerk's office in order, and we're very excited about that, so. Okay, thank you, Jennifer. Public comments? Wow, moving real long.
Yeah, no kidding.
I'm surprised you have anything.
I just have a couple of questions.
Okay.
When it comes to, you all taking, passing the, or money for the Sheriff's Department, that for the new vehicles, any two deputies, and it said it came from the sales tax fund, is that the sales tax fund that's paying for the jail? Is it where that come from?
It is, but here's, after visiting with our CFO, the jail bond is 2.15%, and the auto was 5%, so you can see it was a savings by using that money instead of paying it on the bond, and by the ballot, we could do that. So we saved over 2.5% by using that money.
I just wanted to know if it comes from the sales, I'll let you know.
Yes, yeah, it comes from the sales tax, yes.
Paying off the jail.
Yes.
The second question I have is, I would think, I was asking for some information from the new clerk, and it's not her fault, but we're talking about job description, and she started to pull out a book, and it hasn't been updated since 1999, so I would appreciate if you'd take some time to look at that, thank you very much.
We are in the process of updating our entire handbook, it's been a long, long time, and I'm confident we're gonna get that done this year. Other public comments?
I'm gonna say something to Clint there, the two vehicles have been budgeted for, for like two years, so that's not, there's nothing new with that, and as far as the sales tax for the new, two new positions, I mean, that was mentioned, that wasn't approved by anybody.
It wasn't approved, it was just mentioned.
So, none of what you just said really, don't take that out of context, because, but the cars were budgeted over a year ago, so, they just finally got them to pay for this year, so.
But I'd take exception a little bit, because I brought it to your attention some time ago, don't quote me the exact words, but we've taken vehicles out of that sales tax before, and we didn't even know that that sales tax was for 20 years instead of 10 years on the ballot.
Okay, again, I'm not talking about the sales tax, I'm talking about the fact that we had budgeted for those cars for the last two years, has nothing to do with the sales tax.
Okay, but then, when you make reference to you're using the sales tax to pay for them.
I didn't make that reference, Michael.
Well, I heard it last week, that they came out of the sales tax budget.
The cars?
Yes.
I don't think.
We suggested Bill work with Susan to pay for the cars if possible.
Okay, well you replay the tape, and you'll see that it was.
And we made a suggestion, working with Susan, on finding the monies for the detectives, we did not approve the detective money, so.
Okay, that's also kind of a different context than what it was placed in the comments that you made last week.
Well, I don't agree with you, but that's why we live in America.
Well, that's why we say, go to the videotape.
Yeah, I suggested to Bill to work with Susan, looking for monies that possibly might be available to help with the detectives. We did not vote on it, we didn't approve it, there's no motion on the floor, I made a suggestion, he work with Susan, looking for monies, that's what Susan does, she's CFO, and she can find money, possibly to help the sheriff, that they'll communicate.
Okay, I'm gonna ask you to go back and look at that, just as.
I don't need to know, I don't need to, I know what I said.
I think you do.
No, I don't, I know what I said, so.
Okay, I'm not.
Did we vote on a motion or anything? Did I make a motion?
When Bill was sitting right here.
Did I make a motion? That's a yes or no question?
No.
Okay.
Not that I'm aware of, but I would suggest you go back to the videotape.
I will, thank you.
I guess I'm up.
I was up here when you discussed the accounts payable, and I have a few questions on there, and I just thought I'd show you, Jennifer, perhaps she can explain this better than you three, Jen, can. On this page, this charge is duplicated, and it's, I have 37 pages, and it happens quite a bit.
So the way, since this cuts off here, it's, it's not actually duplicated, that's just the beginning, and it shows, it shows that amount there, like just up here, that amount there, and then it shows electric shock, since it's going from page to page, that's why it shows, it's the exact same thing, but it's only paid once.
Okay, and my second question is, $685.04 is repeated for the different departments, including the landfill, it's a telephone charge per month.
I see why it would have been, like, the, the report that we printed is breaking it down by fund, so this charge here was for all of the phones, the Bridgen Culver section here was $46.37, so it will.
Was what, how much?
Right here, it shows, it comes out of that, Bridgen Culver.
So this is the total for.
So the total for the phones for every department within Public Works, and then, so it'll have the same thing as their landfill, which, if, if the commission wants a different report, we can absolutely do it by vendor, but.
Or even by check number, would be more of a.
Checks aren't processed yet. No, the checks aren't processed yet, no invoice.
But they get processed sometime, and you have a check register, then that should match back to this.
But she wants the approval before she prints the checks, so she doesn't have to void checks. Right, so there is a way to do it by vendor, it just shows an account number, which, for anybody looking that is not familiar with our account, it would be very difficult to say, okay, well this is the Sheriff's Department, this is Bridgen Culver, so that's why I, we use that report.
Same questions, in the past, so.
If you've asked, okay.
Yeah.
I just wanna make sure that Justin's in here, my next comment, is that okay?
Yes.
I hope you all spent the five minutes looking at that YouTube video that I sent you last week. I know it was a little bit off-topic, but it was leading us to majority rule. What does majority rule mean in our democracy? Starts from the 14th Amendment, continues esoterically from the 14th Amendment to where majority rule is, what we elected you for was to represent each district, and you cast one vote, and then two to one wins. In the resolution 20, or no, it was 2360, approved last week?
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago? From the contracts that were, that were examined. From the contracts that were, that were examined, it said for termination of unemployment, you changed it in that resolution to organizational changes. I don't really know what organizational changes means, but you were requiring a unanimous consensus of the board or the commission to approve that. That's not democracy. You, that's actually, I think, if you look at it, really do a lot of research on it, it would be, it would invalidate that resolution.
So you're, so, so we didn't require three yes votes for that resolution to pass?
No, that there's.
Only took two to one.
No, I'm not talking about the resolution. Okay.
So there is, there is a part in the actual resolution that talks about termination of employment. And so, just a quick background check, we, I got a second opinion on this for sure because I knew that there'd be questions about it. So KAC attorney took a look at it and absolutely approved it, even sent him an email so that he could take a look at it in its totality. So obviously, termination is a different beast when it comes to procedure. So with that said, I mean, it takes a super majority to terminate somebody. That's the only, everything else in there is a two to one. The only thing that would be, if you wanted to get changes to the way the organization works, changes to hours, job description, all that stuff, it would be a two to one vote. So the only thing that really changes is the termination part.
Then pull your resolution, because the resolution in that section says organizational changes.
Organizational changes, meaning, I mean, I don't have it in front of me, but once again, I was, there's been more than one attorney that's looked at this. So with that said, I mean, I mean, if we want to, we could, we could absolutely take it to the district court and go up the ladder if we want. I feel really confident in the way the resolution was reviewed by other counsel. It was actually sent to the AG's office, too.
Thank you.
So you're requesting that we challenge that if we don't like it?
Absolutely.
Okay. Sylvia?
Thank you. Any other public comments? Anne? Okay, moving right along. Commission comments?
I've got a question for the county clerk, real quick.
Yeah, yeah.
No. Not today.
No.
Want to coil yet?
It would be May or June.
Some warm weather? That'd help. I used to try Bob White Hunter a time, 98 hadn't died.
Yeah, yeah.
The turnix and reds, I did okay. Bob White. Any comments?
Nope.
Good.
Can I ask you one more question?
No.
I didn't do it anyway.
You're out of order. You're out of order.
There's a $22,000 payment to the Fort Scott Union House, what, what is that for?
That would be an NRP rebate, I would assume.
It just doesn't give a description, it's on the period.
Yeah, whoever enters it, that's, but I would assume that's what it is. Is it on the miscellaneous disbursement checks?
Yes, it's on those pages.
Yeah, that's what it is.
I'll comment that I appreciate what Jennifer's been doing since she's taken over and I appreciate the assistance, the CFO and COO has been working tremendously, a lot of hours to find these files that Jennifer needs. Not saying they're not there, but they're not easily gathered up. So, thank you for doing what you're doing. We're gonna get this house in order and we're gonna go forward. So, saying that, I'll ask for the executive session for 10 minutes, talk about non-elected personnel.
Who minute?
Three commissioners.
Make a motion to go into executive session under KSA 754319B1 to discuss personnel matters of individual and unlooked personnel to protect their privacy for job performance, job duties.
Yes, job performance.
We return here at 9:45, be three commissioners.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor? Aye. Brian, let him do it. I'll be here.
You want to do that, or?
I don't think he's here.
Be unfair to him.
Make a motion to resume normal session, no action.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor? Aye. General, that's all I have this morning. Patty? No? Well, if we'd known this, we could've scheduled our work session and give Eric an opportunity to be ready, but it'd be unfair to ask him to have a work session now, since we can always amend the agenda. He's probably not ready for road work. Okay, I guess we adjourn.
Can I go back to our Wednesday housing session? Do you want to talk about that for a moment?
Wednesday.
Oh, sure, yeah.
I'll give you an update if you like.
Well, no, I don't want to give you an update.
I make a, okay, I'm going to amend the agenda and allow public comment again.
Second that.
On discussion? All in favor, aye.
Whatever the question was asked, do we want any more low-income housing built in Fort Scott or in Bourbon County? There was only one hand that went up, if you recall that. And then I asked the question, you know, which, is it easier to get grants for low-income housing, or? And of course, the question, the answer was, of course. I think our feeling is wrong, is, we need to adjust our feeling on what low-income housing really means. I believe what they object to is the behaviors that they perceive that exist in low-income housing, not the fact that we're providing housing for people with low income.
I would agree with that.
Okay? So, I would propose that we maybe take a look at, and I, this is just a dream that I had one night, that said, why don't we take a look at some transitional housing? Where if you are low-income, it could get into that, and in the first five years, you pay the regular income-based rent. And just like all the rest of us that have owned houses, we probably bought the most house we could at the time, and then when it came time, that our incomes went up, we, we went to a different house, and on and on. So let's say, for the first five years, they paid the base rent. The next five years, perhaps part of that rent could go to equity, where they could share in the appreciation. And then for the next 10 years, they go out and get a mortgage and pay us back for what we paid to build that house. And they would get the equity for those 10 years. We're getting rent, it's not costing us anything because we're getting it back, on a rental basis. And in 10 years, they get their own mortgage and have the opportunity to share in the American dream like everyone else and own a house.
So when you say "we," you mean the county pay us back? I mean...
Well, I'm going back to where it, where the statement was made, it's easier to get grants for low-income housing. The rest of it, we would probably have to get approval for in the grant process to be able to do. But I think it would, we need to dispel this feeling that everybody in certain housing projects are all drug users, are all drug sellers, are all deadbeats, would all be happy to take you door-to-door over there, and most of them are 80- and 90-year-olds that are living on $1,000 a month of social security, and they can't afford a house. Let's stop that behavior. Let's, let's, let's get them into a house that they own earlier. Now, it's good, we, you know, we have to put some separate meters in, water meters, whatever, so, but, just a thought.
Good thought, very good thought.
I, I, I want to comment on that I agree with that, Michael, we agree on some.
Wow. Did you hear that, everyone?
It wasn't, it wasn't recording.
Okay.
They didn't say it very loud.
No, I think it's a great idea. I think that I agree, I absolutely, wholeheartedly agree that it's perceived behavior. Working in what I've done for 10 years, I've been in lots of these houses. And of the thousand houses I've been in, maybe two were selling drugs out the back door. I mean, anyway, but interestingly enough, I will say that I've been told, and I don't know if there's any truth to this, because I haven't seen the forms, I probably shouldn't say it, but, came from decent sources, that this moderate-income housing in the ARPA funds that, that was talked about at that meeting, that one of the proposed programs for, for the city of Fort Scott, that the rent is going to be $900 to $1,200 per month. Now, that's not moderate income to me.
No.
That's absurd.
I think this...
That is an absolute waste of taxpayer dollars. Those are grants.
Right.
It's the MIH grants, the ARPA grants, and it's absolutely absurd that the state would allow that to happen.
Are they considering that market rate instead of income-based?
Don't know. I don't know. But I know that, I mean, I'm sure that, my understanding, there'll be people at the city commission tonight talking about it, so...
Okay. Yeah, I know.
But I just think that's crazy. As my tax dollars for grant money, I would much rather see it go to low-income housing for something you're talking about.
Don't push me.
Then, I, I'm affirming you. Low-income housing, instead of this crazy moderate-income housing, $900 a month, $1,200 a month rent.
They'll have to sell drugs out the back door to be able to pay the rent.
Yes. You can buy a house. My mortgage is less than that.
Yeah.
So I absolutely disagree with all MIH and ARPA funding in Bourbon County, just putting that on the record.
So let's, let's build some houses that people, young people can get into and grow with them. And that would, I think that would encourage jobs to come here, it would, and then would give it us a foundation.
We, as a society, are not doing anything at all to dig people out of poverty.
No. In fact, we're putting in more poverty. More poverty, yes.
Let's keep giving money to the rich, that's a great idea. Let's see how that's, see how that's working.
They think it's great.
Yeah. Sick and tired of it.
Thank you.
I'll share with you that we, I, I did go to...
Oh, did you want to talk?
No. I'm going to include you in my conversation here in a little bit, but I did attend another housing meeting last week. It was a spinoff from the Visione group that we had back in December, whatever, that already held, and that group was, had some government officials from smaller cities, myself, city of Fort Scott, realtors and bankers. Our next step is, is to meet with developers and contractors, because what came out of this meeting is, from the bankers, was, and I might not get this 100% right, the gap's the problem from the selling price, or asking price, and appraisal price, because they have nothing to compare it to. There is no sales in Fort Scott, compare a new house, although the appraisal's not what the bankers wants it. So, their recommendation for the bankers, get a couple of them built, and get them on the market, and that would help set this gap closer together, and hopefully move forward with building more houses, and the bankers like it. So, I like your idea, Michael, and I'm going to take that suggestion to my next meeting.
You can sit, now I'm going to be quiet before I say something I regret.
Well, you always do, so go ahead.
You heard my comment at that deal, the elitist mentality drives me crazy.
Yeah. Well, and the $115 per square foot that the builder, and I don't know who he was, or what, where he was building at, in 1997, I bought a 3,000-square-foot house in Scottsdale for $84 a foot. So, we, somehow, we have to take that gap that's occurred in the profitability or the expense ability of building a house, and help people with that. Thank you.
Moving forward, I'm going to ask to meet with some developers, ready, Mr. Rob Harrington, and a banker, and the mayor of Fort Scott.
I had two comments on that. And the comment is, as I read, and I know it burns people, but I read other newspapers, and they just got another grant for, and this is in Allen County, for low and moderate-income housing at $100,000. But on the other side, let's bring in Mr. Matt Quick on his deal, is, like he said, if you build one house out here, and they appraise it, all of a sudden, it throws all that stuff out of whack, so, he's not compliant, one house can do that to it. And the reason I say that, I was reading Lynn County, and it's talking about, you know, the appraisal process, and he said, yep, we had one home come through here, and it just tore us all up. And the state goes down and selects which homes they look at to apprate.
Right. That's what the banker commented on at this meeting, we need to get a new home, or maybe two, that sells on the market, has a relatively good price, where these real estate people can have a comparison for their appraisal, and hopefully that will help the builders with this gap. That's the plan.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's your job.
Just a real quick comment. If maybe we can get a mic at Jennifer's desk, because sometimes we couldn't hear her, and that might make it easier for the public to hear some of her comments.
Yeah, thank you, that's a good idea. Mr. McCoy?
Yes, I'm before you today as the regional economic development representative, asking for an executive session for five minutes to discuss trade secrets. That would include the three commissioners, that would include Justin Meeks, that would include Rob Harrington and myself. I'm sorry, 10 minutes is my request.
To amend the agenda.
Yeah. Okay.
Does anybody else want a public comment before we do that? Good? Okay. I make a motion to amend the agenda to add a, to add a executive session. That's my, to start.
What's the statute?
Oh, I'm going to have to say that in a second. That's a different motion.
Okay, well, I second that. Motion to amend the agenda.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, now I got to find which one to do. Uh, data relating to financial affairs, trace, four.
Four?
Four, yeah. Okay, so I make a motion to go executive session, KSA 75 dash 40...
139.
Okay, I'm going to...
It's actually 43.
Okay, so it's 4319 B4 to discuss data relating to financial affairs or trade secrets of corporations, partnerships, trusts, and individual proprietorships. The three commissioners, Mark McCoy, Rob Harrington, Justin Meeks, be for 10 minutes. We will return here at 10:08.